Okay. Thank everyone for coming out tonight. Nice to see a crowd. The neat thing is, they're always up here wondering which one of the angry with. But we want to welcome all of you, appreciate this opportunity for you to observe the Board of Education. And we're going to have Jeff on that and Air Force lead us into place, so if you please stand and pay. Thank you. Do you approve the agenda?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? I would just recognize that Mr. Morton will have to refuse himself on six point four under the consent agenda. Hey, all those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by the saying aye. Those nay, I still have to prepare the motion about Mrs. Adams.
Good evening, Board members and guests. I'm so excited to present our ACE Award this evening. Our honoree tonight is a phenomenal lady. She is humble, kind, and would do anything for her students and her colleagues. In fact, she thinks that she is here tonight to support a colleague with getting this award. But surprise, tonight, we are here to honor her, Mrs. Valerie Kearns. An outstanding educator who always puts her students' best interests first. On top of teaching three grade levels, all five subject areas, Mrs. Kearns teaches her students life skills that they will use each and every day. She focuses on eating appropriately in the cafeteria, on appropriate relationships with friends, and with problem solving. Valerie attends dances and extracurricular activities to allow her students these experiences in a new environment where she's also there to assist them if it's needed. Valerie always keeps her eye on the main thing, which is her students, and maximizing them to their highest potential. She is truly deserving of being honored as a caring educator. I would like to read you what her aide, Ms. Dawn Buzzard, says about Valerie. Most days, teachers teach from a textbook, but every day, Mrs. Kearns teaches from her heart. She doesn't teach just reading, writing, math, social studies, and science. Mrs. Kearns also teaches life lessons and life skills. She is so full of kindness and compassion, from showing up at her students' concerts to paying for dance tickets, to rushing a coworker to the ER during a medical emergency, to just today, taking a coworker home after hearing of a devastating loss. Valerie goes far above and beyond as a teacher, colleague, and a friend. Her students are like plants. Her dedication, knowledge, and passion for teaching is like a watering can. She pours all she has into her students each day. Mrs. Kearns' students often enter her classroom as shy timid sixth graders, but leave as self-confident, self-loving eighth graders, ready to take on high school. Valerie Kearns is the epitome of a caring educator. Her students and coworkers are infinitely blessed to have the opportunity to work with her. So Valerie, thank you for your heart. We are blessed to have you here at HMS. So this is for you, caring educator, March 2023, Valerie Kearns.
Mrs. Kearns, I had a pleasure to speak with Miss Adams today. Had a long conversation about your history with Hedgesville Middle School. And this is my third year up here. I don't think I've seen this many friends, supporters, or fellow colleagues.
I didn't work anywhere else. I mean, I love working with them and all of them. And I love the opportunity to work with county schools, it's given me to work with the kids that I work with.
We appreciate your work and myself and rest of the board. Congratulations on being our ACE recipient.
Are y'all not getting in? You won't get in? You guys come sit back. Come on, HM. No, not everybody else go to the back. Some people. All right, big cheeses, HMS. All right, one, two, three, and on three, you're all gonna do something crazy. Two, three.
Well, they're clearing out all the stuff. But that's part of the meeting, is citizens forum. There are four policies states. If we will allow each citizen to sign up, I have three people signed up plus one gave me a message to read. So we'll have four citizens speaking tonight. And we have to always warn the audience, first, you'll have three minutes. Do not allow any derogatory comments, propensity, inappropriate comments, and/or referencing an employee or student by name. And if so, then I have to ask you to yield the microphone and return to your seat. We also want to warn that any slanderous or libel comments are at the speaker's peril and subject to legal recourse by anyone who else is alive saying something slanderous about an individual, employee, citizen, or student. So with those read, try to wait till it kind of quiets down.
They love their energy.
Derek Allen.
Where do I go?
Right over here to podium. If your time runs out, I'll indicate for you to kind of wrap it up in a sentence or two. And you'll have three minutes, and I have a pound of weight meter here, if you can see it.
My name is Derek Alliger. I'm teaching at Martinsburg High School for thirteen years, and I love it. I wouldn't want to teach anywhere else because of the combination of administrative support, positive faculty members, and the diverse student body that's open to new experiences and challenges. All that being said, there are a number of issues that person have in the direction we are headed as a school, as a district, and as a state. Speaking of state, West Virginia has the highest obesity rate and diabetes rate in the country. Since I started Martinsburg High School in 2010, 2011, the state's diabetes rate has increased thirty-three percent, a rate higher than any other state in the Union. During this time, we have continued to provide students with food and drink that are scientifically proven to increase rates of diabetes and obesity. The sheer amount of sugar that students drink during the day is enough to make them lethargic. And that is before we add all the processed carbohydrates that accompany almost every meal, especially prevalent breakfast, most egregiously in the form of donuts. Juice has long been debunked as a health food because of the amount of sugar contained without fiber. It creates the same blood sugar rise as does soda. Soda has multiple corrosive layers of health implications, and there are soda machines being put into schools. Students get eleven grams of added sugar from chocolate milk and seventeen grams of sugar from juice two times a day. That's fifty-six grams of added sugar a day. That's a hundred and eighty days in a school year. That's twenty pounds of sugar just from drinks. These health issues facing our state are relatively new, and the problems are only worsening. Teenage obesity rates in West Virginia in 1999 were fourteen percent. National average in 1970 was five percent. Thirty percent of our teens in West Virginia are obese, and forty percent of our adults. West Virginia is the number one state in the country for hypertension, which is forty-three percent of the adults. Sixteen percent of our state is diabetic. We are genuinely concerned about the physical and financial health of our children. This would be alarming. The average cost of care for a diabetic in West Virginia is $6,700 a year. We as schools do not control the entire food environment for our students, and there are plenty of factors beyond our control. But we can make efforts to move in the right direction, and a small step would be to remove the option of chocolate milk and juice and provide the students with water to drink. Besides food and other research-based approach that would change student health and wellness is movement. Exercise has a profound impact on brain and balances key neurotransmitters serotonin, dopamine, and norepinephrine that prime the brain to learn. Exercise literally creates new neurons in the hippocampal region of the brain, which is a structure where long-term memory storage and retrieval occur. Exercise aids in sleep, memory, and focus. And in clinical trials, exercise is as effective as Zoloft, but truly shines as a preventive measure against depression. We as a school, district, and state should be very aware of protocols that can mitigate depression and anxiety because thirty-one percent of our high school students are battling these issues. Teachers have to complete suicide training every year, and we never discuss how to utilize exercise as a tool to alleviate the pressure that students are under. I'm gonna skip some of this research, but I have some really good research for you guys to check out on that. In schools, we do not prioritize movement. We prioritize technology. I have never been in my thirteen years to professional development training that mentioned any of the studies I have on here that, you know, I'll give you guys, but any of the studies I have on here about exercise and its relationship with learning. But I've been to countless trainings on smart boards, movies, iPads, Schoology, and Telesmart Chromebooks, NearPod, and countless of other products and applications that have since fallen out of fashion. These technologies are not free, and we are currently spending more money per pupil than we have in the history of our state. And what are the results? Test scores are continually going down as health markers get worse. We've been prioritizing technology so long without any market improvements in student performance and health, yet we don't bat an eye at the high cost that the tech requires. The cost-benefit analysis would turn the stomach of any reasonable businessman. We can't afford to view exercise as a cherry on top. It should be viewed as a core part of what makes us human and allows us to thrive in a changing world. You know, another thing I have on here is about spending time outside. Students spend the majority of their time inside. Much of that is on technology that we are being pushed to use as teachers. Outside of school, kids are on technology that they're being pushed to use as kids. This adds up to, according to the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, on average, nine hours a day of screen time. This is an issue once we see all the research and data that supports the importance of spending time outside. Going outside exposes us to a full spectrum of light that regulates melatonin. You don't need to get the gummies. Just go ahead and go outside, especially in the morning, according to Stanford neurologist and ophthalmologist Andrew Huberman. Time outside regulates your sleep cycle and produces vitamin D. Vitamin D is a key hormone that aids in sleep, has important immunological benefits, and has been linked to other mental health benefits. Spending time outside reduces anxiety. Okay, I'll get this. Basically, our kids deserve better. We're failing them in so many different ways, and I'm challenging this board to, at very least, create an advisory group to inform the Board of concrete strategies that could be implemented without burden to administrators, teachers, and students that could move us in the right direction towards some health and wellness markers because it's really bad.
Are you speaking on behalf of yourself or the faculty senate?
I'm speaking on behalf of myself because I think that, you know, even at my school, I feel like a lot of teachers wouldn't agree with what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. We are.
Mr. President.
He had, I gave him four minutes, and I'll get the other speakers to say.
Could we ask the speaker if he could send us the information that?
I have it right here. I have what you.
If you would leave it with Ms. Manuel on the back.
Yeah.
Or email to the board, whichever way you'd like.
It's handwritten. I can sort of give it to you guys.
Okay, Ms. Manuel's in the back corner. Don. Remember, sending the professional educators.
Yeah, Don Booker with West Virginia Professional Educators.
And the purpose of my being here this evening is related to your ransomware attack, which happened back in February the third. We've had numbers of contacts from members of our association who are also your teachers with concerns about the fact they have, they don't, they have not heard much feedback from the administration on this. They feel kind of in the dark in terms of what has happened with what is happening. They don't know when they're gonna, you know, get their access back. They're concerned also about their personal, their personal information, which is on your systems. And they just, you know, a lot of questions which they just don't feel like they're getting much information back on. Basically, what they're being told is that the administration is giving them as much information as they can based on legal advice that you're getting, which I do understand, we do understand. I guess the purpose of my being here this evening is to plead with you to give as much consideration to your employees as far as any information that you can give them that you may not have given them, protecting their personal information on the systems. And if possible, give them some indication as to when they will have access to the teaching tools that they're used to having access to. So I understand that this is a new thing for anybody at this point. And unfortunately, you're kind of the guinea pigs with this situation, and I'm very sorry what has happened to Berkeley County schools. It shouldn't happen to anybody. And I think that's as much as I need to say. We do. I am trying to set up an appointment with your superintendent to get some more direct information from him. I understand that he isn't able to be here this evening for a pretty good reason, that he has one of his children that are playing in a competition at the university level. So thank you for giving me the time to speak to you on this issue.
Where did you draw from to be here?
What's that?
Where did you come from to be here?
Harrisonburg, Virginia is where I live.
Okay, well, we appreciate the effort you made and the message you shared with this. This Dr. Schooly here has been taking notes, and senior staff will be talking about this more as they've been in the past. All right, your point is well taken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell. Or Ms. Mitchell.
Okay, Casey Mitchell. I came here to talk initially, well, I want to piggyback off you because you didn't get your time. And as a, I was a psych major at UC Davis and nutrition exercise minor. And what you said struck the chord with me, and I have big concerns about it. The first month of school, my middle child gained like ten pounds. And, I mean, I don't have control of what he eats at school, so I had to have big talks with him, but the food factor, the nutrition factor in school, that's, I'm right on board with that, and there is a big gut and brain chemistry balance, like the gut health has a big effect on how your brain is responding. And so just to validate what he's saying, I absolutely agree. And I think that a lot of time and energy needs to be spent on that versus tablets and technology as well. Not that we have, need to not do that, but there's a lot of validity to what he said. Anyway, that's not what I'm here to talk about, but I absolutely appreciate what you came here to speak on. And my point is, so we're supposed to supposedly have a new community come in in Martinsburg, just south of Heartland Run, east of Federal Hill, and north Applemills. And it's supposed to be four hundred and fifty-seven double-wide mobile homes, whatever, which I don't care what it is that comes in. It's not like I feel like my community is anything spectacular, but the point is, it's it's prefabricated homes that are going to come in very quickly, very rapidly, very close together. You know, over four hundred and fifty homes on a hundred acres. And right now, we don't have the infrastructure. And there are other facets that I can speak of about the infrastructure, but the main point here, obviously because of the Board of Education, is that there's not, there's already not adequate busing. I don't know who gets the text messages in the morning that what buses aren't going to run because what, so there's not a driver for them, or some of the buses are overcrowded. I know that just within the past few years, our bus had three to a seat, sometimes four to a seat, which is not acceptable. They did change that a couple of years back and added another bus to our neighborhood. But I just don't know how they think that if we already don't have enough drivers, how we're going to be able to accommodate four hundred and fifty-seven new houses going in. And then there's also often a lunch staff shortage. And because of that, they often have to go to using styrofoam trays and plasticware, which is another expenditure, as well as it's crazy wasteful. But, you know, that's literally one person out, the dishes can't be done. And so if we're adding more people and we don't have the staff to accommodate all of these students coming in, in one district, not just one district, but in one area of the schools that are already. Yeah, I think, I can't remember for sure, but two of the Hedgesville schools were, are over capacity, and then the other two are almost at capacity. And, you know, even if we just average one kid per household, which isn't what the average is, that's an incredible amount to be adding. And I know that at Eagle School, which is where two of my kids attend, we already do not have adequate administration. I don't know, I think we're on our, like, fourth interim principal and vice principal or something. I can't even count. I don't know who the principals are at this point, and that's not usually my MO. That's my four minutes, I guess. So, but there, finally, the last thing is, we don't have enough subs to accommodate. Currently, my, one of my kid teachers is out on long-term sickness, and nobody can sub for him, so his team is supporting him. And that's, you know, that's an extra thirty kids for that to be divided, but that might keep me four minutes.
Last person, Julie Abel, she's unable to attend.
Excuse me, sir. I signed up with Ms. Manuel. I emailed you yesterday about speaking tonight. I did, yeah, I apologize. Unless you want to read what you got first? Okay, thank you very much.
And your last name and birth?
It's Mattioli. It's Kim Mattioli, M.A.T.T.I.O.L.I. Put on my old lady glasses here. Okay, first, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Again, my name is Kim Mattioli. My son, my niece, and my nephew are all graduates of the Berkeley County School System. My time as a parent in our district has also netted me an enormous amount of great friendships with several current and former teachers, administrative staff members, administrators in leadership roles within the school system. So I am very keenly aware of the challenges currently being faced by the alarming rise of population here in Berkeley County, coupled with severely diminished staffing resources. I'm here specifically to speak about the proposal that Ms. Mitchell spoke about with another four hundred and fifty-seven homes developed along Welltown School Road, and the impact that this development added to the already-developed Red Hill, Dillon Farms, Butler's Bridge subdivisions, all going in the Hedgesville School District. Now, as a taxpayer with no children left in the school system, I recently voted for the recent bond and levy because I understand that this is crucial to the long-term well-being of our community. My son's freshman year at Hedgesville High School was the last year before Spring Mills High School opened. So I remember how challenging the overcrowding was for both students and teachers. And I now fear that the money that we have just voted will merely be a Band-Aid essentially on top of a hemorrhaging wound. I took the time to read your comprehensive educational facilities plan from 2019. The population in that plan for our county by 2025 was projected to be just over a hundred and twenty-eight thousand people. And according to the most recent census data, that population in Berkeley County in 2021 is up to a hundred and twenty-six thousand people. Our population growth is outpacing all projections. That study anticipated that Hedgesville High School would be at a hundred and eleven percent capacity, Hedgesville Middle at one hundred and nineteen percent capacity, and Tomahawk at a hundred and forty-two percent capacity by 2030. The conductor, the company that conducted that study specifically stated the growth curve that you're looking at is a serious issue, and stated that one of the biggest concerns is that capacity won't be able to keep up with growth. And they went on to say that their recommendation would be redistricting to help balance enrollment. The study also indicated that the rise in the over-sixty population, of which I am closing in on, by the way, would cause concerns and issues for future bond and levy issues. Now, look, I work for the federal government. I understand bureaucracy. I know that the Board of Education does not have any direct say in the affairs of the Planning Commission or vice versa, or any of the applications that the Planning Commission gets. But I do know that both groups have the ability and the common sense to come together for the betterment of our children and our community and work in concert with one another to come up with a plan that will help to slow the growth until schools can catch up. You, all of you, have a voice in this county, a big voice. You're on the Board of Education. You owe it to yourselves to lobby the county to listen to you and take the challenges that you're facing into consideration in their master growth plan. You have to be the voice for these children and the families of this county. And I'm the floor of you to please consider taking that opportunity, meeting with the Berkeley County Council, meeting with the Berkeley County Planning Commission, meeting with the different infrastructure boards, and come together as accounting officials and make your voice heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll point out that under a monitoring item, we're going to be talking about the Planning Commission. Before I end the discussion, the gentleman sitting up on the corner, right on my right, right here, Joe, raise your hand. Didn't see much of him. But he will, he will be having a discussion in about a half hour about that.
Okay, are we allowed to stay and participate in that? Okay.
And I don't know about how much participation, but because I put it on the agenda, I anticipated maybe us asking you all some questions.
Okay.
We spoke to that item on the agenda. Okay, finally, a teacher, Julie Abel, called me tonight, said she couldn't make it. But gave me some comments to share on the record as citizen forum, and I think I'm within doing this. Well timed, so my thoughts are not organized. I'm just trying to chalk. Well, time was so, my thoughts are not organized, I'm just trying to jot down as she was writing. First, she's, she felt that, um, we, they need more time to work. The teachers with the earlier comments about the, uh, schoolology, the computers, they're not, they're not able to do the work, it's having to be done at home on their time. There, as earlier speakers have talked about, there are shortage of substitutes. The teachers are working covering for each other and, uh, it's, it's, it's killing. Extreme frustration, Julia was saying she hoped that she could make it, her original goal was to make four more years so she could retire. Now she's worried whether she can make four more months before the end of the year is going on. The staff is exhausted. There's no time allowed for them to meet the requirements that they're having to do, grades are due. They can't read their I E Ps. The lack of the internet and some of them don't have the internet at home and they're expected to take the work home. And it's just impossible to get done. There are required deadlines, which with, without, uh, with schoolology and they're not able to meet that. She said the recent law change on P E I A is just icing on the cake, lots rather hang in there. She's ready to quit. I, I interject this personal thought here. I'm not worried about the employees walking out, I'm walk, I'm more worried about them walking away and not returning. They need help with time. She asked that the board and the senior administration try to find time as shortly as next week. So they have time to have a workday so they can get the work done. It's eating away at their, uh, personal lives or family lives because they have to take it home. It's just their time. She recognizes they're paid for coverage, but she says the, the money is not worth the stress it's taking upon them. Overtime is killing them, she said. The frustration level, I think I've already mentioned. She had good people that are done, done doing the job. So, uh, the short-term request that she had was they need a workday. They had two hours, but it's just not enough. The time that they're working, ten, eleven o'clock at night, getting up early in the morning. It's just, it's just wearing a mouth of stress. So, uh, I think I covered everything. That was Julie Abel, teacher of Mountain Ridge, uh, middle, wonderful teacher. And finally, she said, are you all listening to me and Alice?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that concludes our parts of the citizens forum, did I miss anyone? Thank you all for sharing your candid and honest voices. We will now go to consent agenda. You're welcome to stay, um, but if you would leave your. You can do so at any time. We have on the consent agenda, one item that we're going to vote on, all the items except for six point four. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the passage of the consent agenda?
So move.
The mess was.
Same.
Okay. You're right, okay. All those, is there discussion or questions on any of the ideas from the consent agenda? I'd like to point out our treasurer's here and he's been leaving for a very good reason. Yes, he's expecting his first grandchild tonight. Sorry if I've embarrassed you by there, Mr. Butts, because I know how happy you are. Okay, while there's a favor of all the items except for six point four, signify for saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay, I appear to have it, I still have declared the pass. Now, we will address the six point four curriculum and exit curriculum trip requests, you have a motion.
So move, sorry.
Okay, move to second. Uh, all those discussion, all those in favor signify for saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay. But I appear to have it, I still have made a motion pass. We're now going to take a, um, probably a half hour, would you say, Mr. Pill?
It's up to you.
Okay, okay, we have to go into executive session to discuss, uh, property purchase. So you all are free to relax and, uh, we're going to retire to the back room. If we're being too loud, somebody knocking the door because it's supposed to be a copy. But I would like you to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing. So he and Mr. Martin have made a motion, all those in favors, give motion signify for saying.
Aye.
Those nay, I have a motion pass. Mr. Pill will be going into executive session along with. Doctor Skil and Mr. Burton and Mr. Butts. Court has come out of the executive session at, uh, seven fifty-five. Well, and I think it's seven twenty-five, so we appreciate your all's ready. I will recognize Ms. Long for the purpose of a motion.
Then the motion is as follows. Authorize the superintendent to, uh, execute a purchase and sale agreement, sign a deed and any other appropriate documents as may be necessary for the purchase of certain property located in the Falling Waters District, Berkeley County, West Virginia, containing approximately thirty-six acres as identified in executive session at the price of two million dollars.
Sir, second to the motion.
Second.
There's discussion on the motion. All right, uh, we want to thank Mr. Pill for working with the staff. Uh, we're locating land for, uh, uh, future schools, which was, uh, identified in the school bond, which we passed in. At the primary election. And we want to thank, uh, Mr. Burton, uh, for also working on that process. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of the purchase of the land, I mean, the agreement as read by Ms. Long, uh, signify for saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, declare the motion unanimous unanimously. This last. After this, we'll be talking about the Planning Commission inquiry, this is what I've raised earlier, this last.
All right, good evening, Mr. Murphy, Board of Education members. Um, I am Alaski, the mathematics instructional specialist for Berkeley County Schools. And I'm happy, I'm happy to be here tonight to share with you the work we are doing in the schools to increase student achievement. And then I will begin with some data and the growth we are seeing and ensure the support that we have in place for, um, with our academic coaches, our technology integration specialists, our math interventionists, and finally share the professional development that is taking place after the school day ends at all programmatic levels. So I want to start, if I do this button right. Give me my friend Sharon Collins her comments. So I guess we're going to have to share the love. This clicker works or it doesn't work? It works, it worked before I got in here and now it's not working, we could work together, Sharon. It's frozen. All right, now you're one ahead. Thank you, ma'am. Um, the first thing I want to show you, this is a graph that Robin Lopez, the Director of Assessment Accountability, shared with you at the beginning of the school year. So this is data you've already seen and this is our, um, data showing that we are allowed behind the state in the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment. But I want to flip to the next graph that shares the comparison in the working, that shares that this is the group, that shows that in the math, in math, we are making gains between the twenty-one and the twenty-two school year on the General Summit of Assessment. You will see that we are making some great gains in grades third through, um, eighth, we are, we are struggling in eleventh grade with the older students. But especially I wanted to point out, between third and fifth grade, we made some growth and sixth grade had a great jump in one year. Um, so we are seeing some increases in our summative assessment data. There we go, all right. So at each school level, the academic coaches, the T S S and the math interventionists are invaluable and have a direct impact on our teachers and students in our schools. Um, with the academic coaches, all of the academic coaches have received professional development, math recovery assessments, instructional strategies. I've spoken to you on a few occasions about the positive impact that this math recovery training is having in our schools. And by having this training, our coaches have now been able to, um, work directly with their teachers to address the gaps in their buildings and to personalize the professional development in their schools. At, at each academic coach's monthly meeting, I meet with them to share resources, provide updates, collaborate and answer any questions they have. Uh, the academic coaches and I have established an open line of communication and built a relationship so they know they can pack that be at any time and I'm here to help their school and their teachers. The next group that I work with directly a lot are our technology integration specialists. Um, again, I collaborate with them based on their school needs and I hope them facilitate their school professional development on platforms such as, um, I excel in the secondary math level. We do a lot of collaboration on Desmos, which is a student platform that has kids collaborating and problem solving. Um, we work a lot on some online manipulatives that they can share with their schools. And then, again, we have a constant communication between myself and the T S S, whatever they need for their school building. And finally, oh, and the other thing I meant to, I want to promote, the elementary T S S. We spent a large amount of time looking at data and figuring out what are the gaps in math? And from these gaps, we built some online activities for the kids to do in their school. They built this great month of, uh, math for February where every day they were supposed to do a math challenge. But unfortunately, due to the, uh, network, um, we have to push that back hopefully in the next couple of months. But they again are helping with the, um, needs of math in their schools. And then finally, the math interventionists, and we, I've been working with them for a couple of years. And again, at previous board meetings, I've talked about the success they've had with their math recovery training, the growth we've seen in their buildings. So again, they're all trained, we keep them updated. We meet quarterly with them to look at their data and again, answer their questions, share strategies. We've built a great resource on Spooly for them to use with their teachers. With activities and games, online, hands-on and online games to use with their, um, teachers in their building. You, we all know that we are struggling to find certified math teachers for our county. Um, we about three years ago established the secondary math cohort for long-term substitutes. We were lucky for two years to have Debbie Sanders be my, um, secondary aim and she retired again. Um, so we, I know she's enjoying retirement. So we have been lucky enough to have Janice Stenson, who just retired from Hedgesville High School, and she was our teacher of the year in twenty eighteen, fill Debbie's role. So Jan is now, um, working with our long-term subs being in their classrooms. So I wanted to give you some data to show that this cohort of ours is really working. So in grade six to twelve, we do have about twenty long-term substitutes, right? But as you can see from my little table there, our, our long-term subs are staking around, right? And the longer they're with us, the more we can work with them and build their capacity and make their classrooms effective. And then thus working with our students. So and ten of them are new for us this year. But we have five, um, long-term subs that have been with, with us for two years. So we've been able to work with them for two years. One of them is in their third year and four of our long-term subs have been with us for over five years. Working with, um, other good news to say is out of those twenty, five of them are actively pursuing certification. I saw one the other day, he took his practice, so we're crossing our fingers, thinking he passed. Um, we've graduated three teachers from our long-term sub list and we now have three new certified, fully certified math teachers over the years. So this program has been very effective and the longer we keep a long-term seven in classrooms, the more we can work with them and help our students. So the next thing I want to talk about is the professional development that we've been offering and it's critical, right? We need the professional development for our, for to increase our math achievements. Guided math is a development, professional development, we've worked with our elementary teachers. Guided math is where, um, teachers work with small groups of children at one time on specific skills or needs. And while they're working with those specific kids, the other kids are out in groups, doing stations, doing practice. Um, it takes a lot of management, it takes a lot of, um, planning. So due to our lack of substitutes, we, I'm proud to say that since October, in the evening once a month, we have, well, with Dottie Pennell and myself, we have first grown those teachers from K to five, right? We have worked with them directly, they're grade level leaders. They in turn are training teachers from the schools. So I'm proud to say we have forty-five teachers, either teachers or academic coaches or interventionists that are representing our schools and meet with us once a month from four thirty-six. Um, of course, they get paid stipend for their time. They in turn take everything we talk about, return to their buildings and share it with their colleagues. Um, and it's been very effective, so, and we thank them for their time after school. I actually had this tonight, so we recently have been awarded a five thousand dollar grant from the state, the Math for Life. And due to our, um, subgroup data with our C I, C S I and A T S schools, we decided to focus on the special education teachers. So we began last month, um, with our new funding. And again, this is after school, in fact, I left there tonight to come here and we are working directly with nine teachers. Um, and so most of these teachers are from Orchard View in South and Eagle that are participating with us. And we're working on strategies, data, how to reach our, um, special needs students. And then I want, this is, um, the state has a cohort called the Mountain Year Mathematics Master Teachers. And this is a group led by WVU, um, Matt Campbell and Joanna Burt Kinderman for Pocahontas Schools. And they've been awarded a grant from the, um, science, National Science Foundation. And so they're working at the state level to invite secondary teachers to apply, build their leadership skills, train these teachers and then bring them back into their counties to work. This has been around for two years and we are proud to say that we have two teachers that have been selected to work with the state level. So, um, Joshua Jones teaches at Martinsburg North Middle and Elaine Schwank works at Mussumon High School. And so they have been able to, so Joshua was working with Sean Law in his building. And the whole point of this group is they find a topic that bugs them, right? They work together to figure out how to fix it, they collect data and they report back. So this is the first year we've been fortunate to have these in our county. So Josh and Sean have been working on, um, working on students perseverance, their mindset towards math and working with word problems. Elaine has been working with two of her teachers from Mussumon High School and they are working on the same thing. Kids attitudes towards man, mindset and knowing that if you make a mistake, it's okay, right? That we learn from our mistakes. So these two have been working with this year with the support of federal programs, were able to give these teachers a small stipend. And Elaine and Josh will be presenting their findings at the WVU C T M, uh, conference on March seventeenth and eighteenth. So in conclusion, moving forward, um, I'm proud of the work that we have done, but we have so much more work to do. Um, we are going to keep building the relationship between academic coaches, T S S and interventions. They're directly in the schools, they're kind of like my direct line to work with the people in their buildings. Um, continue the guided math award with our teachers. And then, of course, I, the secondary math cohort will continue to work with us year after year. We have a small number of teachers in M three T, the Math in Your Mathematics Project, but we hope to, um, get more teachers about next year because the teachers teaching teachers is very effective. And then finally, keep promoting that positive mindset that, that math in Berkeley County schools and our kids can be successful. And so that's mine. Quick report of math for the year.
Questions from members of the board?
I just had a question and I think I asked this before. Um, why do you think, um, our test scores are so low in, in, in twelfth grade?
Eleven times, I, and I saw high school pretty much all my career, the older kids are tougher to reach. The older kids, um, I don't, they don't see the value as much in education. So we're working really hard with the mindset, with the, like, the SAT is important. Um, I think that has helped to get them to see the value of education and the fact that this will help them move further along. But the older they get, they're tougher to crack. Yeah. And I also think kids don't have, like, that mindset, like, they can do it, like, math is important. I really need to work hard at this, so that's where we're trying to promote the positive mindset with the kiddos.
How important math is.
Yes, and why it's important and why they need it.
That's right.
No, I was just, I was just thinking about what you said about the older students and that.
Yeah.
What came to mind, me is thinking that maybe they're thinking, I, I have, I know all the math I need to know.
Right.
So why do I need to know physics? Why do I need to know physics and calculus?
Yeah, they're tough, they're a tough group.
Questions?
I had, I, I, I've asked this question before, um, not, not of, of you, of course, um. And I'm going to keep coming back to it, something stuck with me when we were at our, our school board training recently. And it was the focus of leading indicators versus lagging.
Right.
And I, are, with this program, are you using leading or are you using lagging?
Tonight, I, I focused on our summative, our lagging. Um, I didn't talk too much about what we do currently. Um, but we do like in the guided math cohort, we really talk to the teachers about, okay, let's, let's. Form until we assess these kids, what skill are you working on this week? Um, not so much with, I mean, we had star assessment, so that's part of our guide that go work. How do you, how are you assessing these kids and know where they're going to go? Secondary, we do a lot of work with the IXL, which right now. Um, we need to get back into it. Um, but a lot of focus of our professional development is. What are you using now as your classroom to drive your instruction? Um, which is the work we continue to do with them.
Okay.
Even like a quick once a week, let's see where those kiddos are.
Yeah, because that was one of the things that they, they really were, you know, they, they were talking to us about that being something that we're working to. Really be able to see a lot of progress. Um, you know, our focus typically is on the lagging data.
It is, yes.
And we need to be more focused on the leading data. And so I would love to see more of that information coming out. Just because it helps us understand what work, what we are doing from day to day. Um, this was great information. I love that you were able to show that we are progressing and that, that children are, are getting it, but. Um, I'd love to see what's.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Guided math, that's one of our big pushes, like, so why, why is this child in this group? And why, why they did this group? What are you going to do to guide your?
We have a lot of information. And you have to ask when it comes to my.
I understand.
We have a lot of information on the leading data.
Um, we have, Rob, Rob Lopez had some last time.
She had some, but.
Yeah.
How, well, it's a, how immediate is it? I mean, how?
It probably depends on, I'll be honest with you, it depends on what classroom you're in. Like we do the star assessments and IXLs do the benchmark. The IXL, the kids should work on it every week and we can immediately see every week where they're at.
Mm-hmm.
Um, of course, now it's hard to get the data.
Yeah.
In elementary, we have a star assessment and we get that every, um, every, every nine weeks. Um, what I've been trying to push with teachers is, what do you know as a pioneer now? What simple paper pencil thing can you give to tell me where, where is Jackie? Like, how did she get that concept? Um, so that's a mix based on where, um, which classroom you're in. But I totally agree that we need to work more on that and get more of that information to know where our kids are at now.
Because that, that, I think that's important.
Okay, yeah.
And then I have another question after you asked your.
This, this year after year, it's always, we're below like the, like your new average in Western Union.
Yeah.
Depending what's graph you look fifty, forty-third.
Right.
And, and it's wing. Is there anything like you see that's a pinpoint? Problem that we're having to time and meet the, the Western Union average? Is it, is it the certified teachers mainly?
Some, some of it is the fact it, it is, um, the, the lack of teachers that are coming out, the uncertified, the long-term subs. Um, I don't, I don't think, I do know we work really hard right now with our teachers to change the way we teach math. Right? Keep giving that, because math is even scary to some teachers, right? They didn't like it in school, so they're just like, oh, I used to do it. So where we're, I think a big, one of the problems is the, the teacher's knowledge, the teacher's capacity. So that's why we do those professional developments to say, here's why a fraction is a fraction and here's why. Um, those controversial, you know, topics, they're working with teachers, kids need to be able to think and problem solve, right? And we really need to work on with our kids of giving them independence and letting them struggle. It's really hard for teachers. I was the worst. I was an enabler to watch kids struggle because you just want to go to home. Like I always had a pencil right here, let me go and help them. So part of the problem is we don't have the long-term subs. They don't have that confidence in math themselves to work with the kids. Um, which is part of the problem and the fact of mindset. Most kid, our biggest thing in math is kids need to believe that they can do it.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I, most kids go, oh, my mom says I can't do this, right? So that's a huge piece. So I always promote, like, I don't want to hear anyone in Berkeley County schools ever say they don't do math and they can't do math. Because don't I get upset? I do, I get all fired up. Because all kids in Berkeley County can do math, so we have to fix that mindset. Right? Let them think that they can do it. Eleventh grader, I know the SAT is hard, but you can do it. So the work Elaine's doing at Musselman and Josh. With those kids at North is trying to convince them that they can do it, which is the hard battle, so.
Of course, making math fun.
Yes, I think it's fun, yeah. But it can be fun for all, because nobody wants to sit there and just do drill and drill and drill. We want to have games, we want to have problem solving, we want to have. Robotics, we want to have hands-on things for the kiddos to do, like guided math. You're a math for an hour, give the kids something to do every hundred fifteen minutes to make them want to be there. Um, yeah.
Do you, do you think, so sorry, it's a problem, just, um, would it be better to go back to the basics? Instead of energizing pilot programs and other, the new this, this, this versus like, what's my studied and.
Right.
Resource base you.
Well, the, the most new research basis, the basics are fine. It's just the way we teach mathematics, right? We need to teach with these, we call them the habits of mind, right? We want to teach our kids to persevere. We want our kids to learn to talk to each other. We want our kids to sit in math class and I'll be quiet. We want our kids to draw pictures. We want our kids to use tools. Um, little guy should be using manipulatives. Um, so back to basics is good, it's just, it's the whole approach, the way we teach math.
Hmm.
Um, is, is get math, you know, get the kids, math is a bunch of patterns, right? Let the kids discover the patterns, let them figure out why. If we do that, if we do those habits of mind, then our, our scores will come up.
Yeah, I, I just see that a few people like, wrong, just teach them what they used to, like.
But I know they get mad and I know my Facebook page blows up and I have to watch what I say because I need my job, but it's, it's approaching. Is what we need to do, like how we approach math for kiddos. Drilling and killing. After forty-five minutes is not going to build their excitement, so we want to have kids involved with the math. I always said, if it's rooms full of quiet, it's not good.
Thank you.
Go to Cindy Evers' class itself, it would, it would be great. There's a lot of talking and discussing of problem solving there.
Well, I think that's a good point you made too about the way that math is taught.
Yes.
Like my grandson comes over and he, he does math and we do math and, you know, I think math's fun and he thinks math's fun.
Yeah.
But the way that he does the problems.
What he thinks.
It's different than the way that I learned.
Yeah.
I like his way better.
Yes.
Because it makes more sense.
It's.
Okay, now I see.
Yeah.
You know, generationally, I think if you're still focused on going back to the basics, but the way we learn sometimes. Not the best way to make us really.
Right.
Figure things out.
Yes.
Further, so anyway.
We want kids to.
So here's my question.
Next hour, but I'll.
Yeah, um, no, you talked about the guided cohorts and we, earlier, uh, we. Read letters from teachers from this ABL in particular about the time.
Right.
Think that, I know these, these are accurate, but have you, have you heard concerns from even some? Of those in the cohorts and, and some of the math teachers about not having enough time to adequately plan the lessons to really. Beats the way they.
We've heard those concerns and we do, um, so that's one of the reasons why we've met since October. So when we get in our grade level teens, um. They do some planning, right? So with our grade level leaders, like Kelsey Mercury is my first grade leader for, um, first grade in Hedgesville Elementary. Kelsey will spend an hour and a half and they do, they plan ideas, they plan things, they plan resources. So then when they go back to their colleagues, they're like, hey, we just spent some time together and put all our minds together. Here's some ideas for the next. Three or four weeks in school. So we make sure that when we do our cohort times, that we build planning time in. Because guided math does take some planning, it really does. So we're trying to give them time. To go back to their schools and on school, we do have a really big folder of games and activities that any teacher can pull at any time and use in their classroom. Which again, it goes back to my academic coaches, who are invaluable and they help plan it. And they can go into a classroom now and be like, oh, you're working on fractions, let's try X, Y, and Z. So we're trying to build around them to make their life easier for planning, because it is, yeah. But that's a big piece of the guided math cohort is they sit and they talk and they collaborate and they plan, and then they bring it back.
Um, and this might go, I guess, maybe more towards Hannah, because I don't, I don't know which avenue, where, you know, which avenue to. To, well, I know, you might have more of the answer than, than what she might. Um, I know with our LSICs, we've been hearing a lot about the IXL math and how kids are. It looks so good on paper that they're, that they're excelling, but they're actually going and, and doing math problems that. They might have been able to do previously, um, and have a mastery level. Um, and they like doing that. And that's, I don't necessarily see that as a problem so much as, you know, those kids that need that little bit of push to get that rigor back.
Right.
Um, have we voiced a concern or a request yet to? IXL as far as, you know, putting some sort of buffer in the program so that the teachers have control that they can't go below a certain level. To, to kind of keep that rigor pushing.
They can, and kids, you know, kids are.
They figured it out.
Kids are kids, so there are, there are a couple of things teachers can do. Um, one, they can go in and override things, but I, I can't talk to IXL as long as it's automatic. There is a button on IXL called live classroom, so if the kids are in front of them and they click live classroom, they can see exactly what the kids are doing. So I could be working with this group of kids over here and I'll put their tan on the bus, little Tannen's over there. On kindergarten and I'm in my eighth grade room, I'm telling you, I taught kids little, and you can send a kid a message like, um, your own room thing. Or just a simple book, um, that's where the TISs come in. So we've been trying to educate the TISs on those little things. Okay, so some they can share with their teachers, but that is something in IXL, we've talked, and IXL is aware of it. That the kids, it's really easy for them to go down, but that live classroom button, I think it's pretty powerful. Because I, I have your little tan and someone just gave me one look or talk, my parents were strict, trust me, I'd be off in second.
Yeah, that's the first time I've heard somebody.
The live classroom, it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
I actually have the live classroom button where I can see any kid in the district at any time. Um, but classroom teachers, that's part of the professional development and, and the teaching with the TISs is like, guys, just hit the live classroom button.
Do, do, uh, many, I think, teachers?
I, we're, we're getting the word out, we're getting the word out that.
The monitoring piece needs to be improved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. I, when I'm in a room, I'm like, y'all forgot about the live classroom button, right? And that's where the TISs come in.
And, and not to, not to.
But they're still kids.
And they, yeah, they are, but we've got, we've got a lot on our, on our teachers too, so.
Yeah.
It's just they have those little gentle reminders that, hey, there's that little button.
And that's where the TISs come in. That's why that relationship building, I'm like, great, this is, let me show you this button. Um, yeah, and it's a simple little thing you can do to keep an eye on.
Okay.
Well, my concern, any more questions? Uh, my concern, one of them is that the COVID money is going to run out and one they have the TISs.
I know.
Academic coaches.
I'm concerned.
And interventions are on that list and being funded there.
Yeah.
And, uh, it, which I don't, I don't foresee their kind of money coming back into the county after March of twenty-four.
Yeah, I'm concerned myself because they're a huge help there. That's one woman trying to watch.
Yeah.
Okay, both.
And, uh. And also, um, it, it looks like you're using the National Certified Teachers Board approach, math teachers. There, but you don't have the cash incentive.
I know, but if I can get the long-term selves to be certified, then I bring up the three-step increase. The one teacher I referred to, who just took his test. I'm like, do you not want a three-step increase? And then we told his wife, and then she made sure he didn't. So, so we, we, we knew how to fix that right away and I'm pretty sure he passed, so. But I know the, the TISs and the coaches and the interventionists, they are invaluable and I wanted to promote their work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned about.
I am too.
If, if they have to go back to the classrooms.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll be valuable people, but their, their ripple effect will not be reaching as far as the. Okay, are, do we have any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we had two speakers earlier tonight, uh, seeing, sitting there, um, planning. Uh, at some point, I'm going to let, let you all ask any questions because we normally under sit in store and cannot talk to. Participants because it's not on the agenda, but tonight, Mr. Burton is going to come forward. And we're going to talk some about the planning commission inquiry and discussion, so. Uh, Mr. Burton, I hope you're ready for this. I want to, want to point out that I went down to talk to Ms. Hoffmester last week. And she, first thing she told me, well, Mr. Burton was in the week before, wondering, you know, if, we didn't have realized each other's, but. But, uh, first, uh, before he begins, I just want to talk that there are three steps in the planning process. You have a sketch plan and that is where we, the board are involved. Not involved, but they're using our data from somewhere to do, to do things. And she, and Ms. Hoffmester told me that between a sketch plan, then you have the preliminary plan, then the final plan. It's about a year difference. So we do get some numbers, but I'm going to let, I'm not going to take Mr. Burton's thunder away. Because he wants to talk about that formula and some other things. Go ahead.
Yeah, there's really not much thunder, but I am here to answer whatever questions I can help with, but, uh. In, in general, I guess what I'll talk about is the, the school impact form that is completed by developers and developers. At the time that they're turning in their sketch plan for approval. So there are some, some calculations. There's some calculations on, on that form. That project how many new students would come out of whatever new development it is that they're, they're talking about. Uh, those numbers are different based on whether it's a single-family home, a townhouse, a rental apartment, or, or condominium that would be owned. So, as we've been checking in with the planning commission over the last couple of weeks. Trying to see how, how can the board then possibly have a greater voice in this process and how is that process working right now? Uh, I think what we've learned is, is that form is still being completed. But it's just going along with the rest of the paperwork. It's not really being reviewed by anybody at the Board of Education. We really have not had much voice in that process. Uh, however, the calculations that are used on that form were at, at some point approved by the Board of Education in the past. So I reached out to, uh, Mr. Preston Smith, who did our, our long-term demographic study and, and, uh. Helped us make an analysis on where to build new schools and what are, what are needs for new schools would look like going forward. And I asked him what he thought about the numbers and shared the form with him. He said, in, in general, you know, the, the form is okay, the numbers are just outdated. And for the most part, they just trend a little bit low for townhouses, apartments, and condos. But the single-family home number is particularly low. So we may be a couple of points off on townhouses. Were forty percent or so low on the single-family homes. So what that looks like. If you just took one example, or, uh, you know, two hundred new single-family homes. At the current calculation, which is point two-two new students per home, that would be forty-four new elementary school students only. And at the recommended calculation, Mr. Mr. Smith was talking about, he said between. Three and four, point three and point four, if we do point three-five, that's seventy students. So from forty-four to seventy, it's a whole other classroom of students that would, would come out of those, and that's just at the elementary level. The same thing would be true at middle school and high school in, in the same building. So. I think going forward, it's just a, a, another challenge to the board to try to be a more active participant in this process. And maybe challenge the, the, not only challenge the numbers on the form, but how is the form being used? Because as it is right now, it is being completed, but if, if the final. Yeah, derailed it every day.
Serious fault.
It's not, it's not just the, the, the numbers, but it's what are we going with those numbers? Though I think as it is right now, even when it shows that. The result of this new development would be that the schools are going to be over one hundred percent. That's just what the fact is and it still carries on, uh, that I know there, there's no subdivisions being denied. Because schools are going to be over one hundred percent. And, uh, that's one of our speakers mentioned earlier, all the head. We're talking about Hedgesville, just because of one new development, but it's everywhere you look, if, if you look through this, uh, activity report that. Mr. Murphy passed on the main, you know, every district and many new single-family homes and many new townhouses and there's apartments coming also. But just in Hedgesville, our projections from our study that's already only more than a couple of years old. Uh, the elementary school is projected to be, this is all by twenty thirty, at a hundred and ninety. Uh, the elementary school is projected to be, this is all by twenty thirty, at a hundred and nine percent. Uh, intermediate school at a hundred and forty two percent, the middle school at a hundred and nineteen, and the high school at a hundred and eleven percent. And those percentages we've already determined are, are low, you know, we're trending well above those projections, so. All I can do is report on, on uh what's being done and, and what we see happening, but I, I definitely think it's a, a challenge of the board and I think we're all. Currently willing to, to help uh be involved in this process and do whatever we can to be a part of it.
You know, the uh, um, I was trying to find a summary of the year for the uh Magisterial Districts. That's on the page, it's it. But um, the other, you, you hit on two points there that you need to discuss. I am planning on uh with several of the board. Uh, and with senior staff, working on a meeting with the county council. Uh, we have a couple of issues, this would be one of them. Uh, as far as uh legislation is concerned. Impact fees, which a lot of people bring up. Um, have, you have to reach certain requirements, um, you have to have zoning, which has failed twice in the county. Uh, back in the nineties and now, I guess in two thousand. You have to have uh building curves, which the county has, you have to have a comprehensive plan, which the county has. And you have to have a certain, it's decimal of, uh, every ten years, you have to have a certain percentage growth, which we have. So we have three of the four requirements and um, uh, we, we need to sit down and talk with the uh. County Council about the fourth one, uh, whether zoning should be a standalone issue or be here and, or. And that ever take a change in the law. Uh, there are other issues like uh, um, with the water and sewer. Uh, we don't have any input there uh with the uh, with the uh two boards. Uh, I'm trying to think here, but uh, the, the groups which have seemed to have the greatest influence would be your health department. Uh, because uh subdivisions have to meet certain, if the density depends upon whether you have wells or. Waterlines of, and whether you have set it with sewer lines. And uh, so, so the health department has a lot to say. What people would read in this thing is that the school board, it says here, these factors are for multipliers have been approved by the Berkeley County School Board. And they're based on historical information, you know, the history is outdated. And two, we don't approve individual flats or, or um. It's some other word, uh, sketch plans. And we don't, and at one point we didn't raise here, you told to Mr. Smith, we haven't figured out where they get the capacity for the schools, did you? Want to say anything about that?
Been occasion where they have called and, and asked us for those, you know, various people have called, a developer or builder has. But there, there are plenty of times where I'm not aware where they got that information, so I'm not sure how accurate it is. I think you can look and Google it and, and get fairly. Fairly accurate information, I think that's what people are doing.
Yeah, so, some of the uh, somebody told me, I may want to go to school. And some, some studies say, well, if you have a planning period, the teacher has a planning period, that means there are no students in the classroom at that time. Well, some, some sources are saying, well, put the teacher on the court and let him come in. And use that empty classroom at that time, that increases capacity. Uh, but uh, as teachers who have traveled through the room now. Uh, it's not, not you, way, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a. The teacher is not prepared when the bell rings to come out to be teaching. Uh, I would say, but uh, uh, we need to, we need to follow up. I want to let her two guests ask a question, yes, ma'am.
I do, um, you talked about the, the four things that you want to talk to Berkeley County Council about, and you said, one of them was the comprehensive plan. Um, maybe just jotting a note, it's my understanding that that comprehensive plan is supposed to be updated. Um, it's either that or the subdivision ordinance, um, is supposed to be updated every ten years and it's wildly out of date right now, they're working off of a uh, off of um. I, I guess a, uh, what do they call it? Um, an interim plan of some sort, so.
You mean the county council or us?
County Council. Yeah, yeah, and the planning commission, specifically the planning commission off the master plan, it hasn't been um properly updated even in its normal cycle. And as we all know, nothing's normal about what happened in twenty twenty and beyond, especially for our area and the migration. That, that we've experienced, and I've been here long enough to see that first wave that came through, you know, ten, fifteen, fifteen years ago. And, and now, I mean, it, it is, is. We all see it, we feel it every day, but if you try to pull data, right, um, which, you know, I'm a data driven person, I get it. Um, that data is not accurate and it's going off of inaccurate numbers that have not been reflected. And I understand studies cost money and you just got done one with the comprehensive plan of twenty nineteen. That projected out to twenty thirty and it immediately, as far as I'm concerned, became outdated within a year. Right? Um, so I mean, I'm, I, and then to your point about the school impact um forms, where is that data published? Because um, you know, people can just randomly start picking, you know, what if they don't call you and ask you what the school capacities are? In this particular one, and this is the first one I'm seeing, but I'm interested in it. Like now, I'm in it, it, this, this started it for me, but it's now, I'm full in. I went to the planning commission meeting before I came to you guys and I watched them approve within five minutes and a stroke of a pen. They had another, almost like fifty homes that are approved now to move to the next, um, with no talk at all. In that a public hearing or any of the, the preliminary stuff about the school impact forms.
Well, the, the uh, what Mr. Burton said is, one, one way we could approach it, me and I have not had a discussion, but. Get down and get a couple of sketch plans from five years ago. See what projections were and then go to the transportation department and see what the actual number of suits were.
If you look at the um, but there, there's actually online, the uh, Berkeley County Planning Commission had um. A, a study that they released that had those projections and then they just literally published the twenty twenty two. Growth chart, you know, for how many houses were added, how much business was added, that's all out there. It on the, the read aheads from tonight's meeting, so if you want to find those, yeah, you got there. They've got, yeah, they've got all the numbers in there, it's crazy how much we've had in terms of um. In terms of, of the addition of homes just in one year, let alone in the last three years.
Well, I guess my uh, uh, concern, I have a question I have, and this is probably for them, but. Uh, it's my understanding, and I heard someone say this, one of the commissioners said. Uh, they cannot deny the development, but.
Yeah. Yeah, and so for me, as somebody who's here, right, and I'm not emotionally attached to this from a child perspective, because like I told you, my kids are, are done. Right? But I'm, I'm a resident here that cares. And, and I just feel like you guys have the power to go to the county council and demand that, that, that they stop. They stop draining you so badly, right? And when I say you, I mean all of these people that were here. I wish the Hedgesville Middle people had stayed here to hear this. These are hardworking people who, and you were just talking about that, sir, you know, they are trained, they are tired. And, and it's just, we can't. The, the county council will come at you and say, well, that's why we're trying to bring all these houses, affordable housing, affordable housing. That's not, that's not translated, it's not working, it's not working because we don't have the teachers to support this. This influx of people that, you know, will come for, with this affordable housing and I just feel like we've got to slow down and let. Specifically, the water infrastructure, the road infrastructure in, in terms of, and I know Mr. Gokenauer has been down. I believe Mr. Catlet's been down to Charleston, working hard to try to get the division highways to pay attention to us as well, but. I feel like right now, of the big three, water, roads and schools, you guys are the ones that are the most impacted, which is why I'm sitting here tonight.
Well, we're, we're initiating, I'm a week behind Mr. Burton there, going to the planning commission, but we're initiating a conversation with. Commission. Um, we, we have bond sales coming up right uh, in May. And we're waiting till after the bond sales to sit down with the commission because we don't want to have an impact upon the bond sales right now. Uh, as far as the, we've, so we want to get that out of the, and then we're going to sit down with the commission. And put our heads together, who, you know, else we need to expand that conversation. Usually it's more productive to keep it smaller than getting into a large, into a large round table. But we are, because of the uh subdivision of the, of Long Harland, I've had. A neighbor, they're also friends of mine, asking, I, so I went down just to find out, what, you know, what is the process? Uh, but we probably need to first look at the sketch plans of a couple of years ago, see the actual impact versus the projected. And then uh, and then go to the van and ask, because it's out of our control, the numbers they have here. We have proven apparently somewhere in the past that we need to read the numbers, revisit those numbers. The other thing is that we need to look at. Things in the, in the plan that could help offset the impact upon our people. Someone, I think it was you, uh, indicated, our population is growing, but a lot of people who are not. Uh, raising children, it's not growing as fast as the older population and at a point, you're gonna get people who just say, I. I've, I've raised my children, let them raise theirs, and they're not gonna support schools.
Yes.
And so we have to be cognizant of that, uh, uh, approach that. But uh, I wanted you all to stay to hear his presentation. We are starting, we are beginning our conversation, late as it may be, we're, we're approaching this.
Late is better than never, so, and that's why we're here because it's, you know.
I'm glad you stayed because I wanted you all to hear.
I appreciate any efforts you guys take, I, I can't, you know, I can't do it all myself and, and, and Ms. Mitchell and I are just a small team right now. We're growing though, we're, we're, the, the voices are growing and we're really trying to energize this county to say enough. Where, you know, in, in the, in the words of my Italian grammar, basta, right? So I just, I need to, I, I, I'm glad that you guys listened, so thank you for that.
We have to, you have to be aware, aware, the way government is organized on the county level. You do not have an, a, like in Maryland, I think, Maryland has more centralized control over everything. Like the county commission is also over top of schools, if I'm not mistaken.
No.
And, and uh.
No, they're, they, they are over, so the county commission, at least in Washington County, um, has some purse strings.
Yeah.
But that's, but that is very limited, their scope is very, very limited. They do have zoning, which then gives them a little bit more ability to. To have a steadier growth instead of a huge influx. Um, but they also seek out, I do know that with the planning commission there, they do seek out input from. The school board and from water and sewer, and they, they do that in their planning so that they can make a better decision. Um, I don't know what our commission does in that regard, it doesn't. From what I'm hearing this evening, it doesn't sound like it's all encompassing as far as gathering all the information before a vote is done, but. The, I actually had a question, if you're okay if I ask it now. Um, do we know when exactly this pupil yield factor was done?
When those calculations were created, I'm not sure.
Oh, God. Okay, then. The, yeah, and then the other question, and this may be something that, that. We have that discussion, whoever goes with the planning commission or the um county commissioners. It says that the planning commission is presently composed of six, eight citizen members, including one member of the county council. My assertion would be, should that be something where, you know, maybe there's someone from our board. That also works with this group so that there is an awareness from our representative grouping on what this looks like as far as impact on schools.
Right, they uh, we, we did, we do have a person who was a former employee, it's Eric Goff. And I think he, he wanted to serve on the, in the commission, but he's no longer employed. Uh, and it's unlike the parks and we're actually the other boards we appoint, this, this was not one. You, you have to realize that the county commission appoints the planning commission. But then the planning commission will be free and independent body of the county commission.
Right.
Uh, so the, the decisions they make are within their, their own grasp and not reviewable by the county commission. Now, the county, the county commission can replace members to try to change some direction of the planning commission, but as far as. Day to day control of things like this, that, that's not the case.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking about that, that it, they, they serve a three year term, there are six citizen members, you know, if we can advocate to the commission. Who appoints the, the planning commission members. Can, can one of those be someone from the board, one of those be that seat for, for a board of education?
We, usually it's statutorily created mandates that, that the Board of Education has an appointment on there. Uh, we can ask them to change their bylaws to increase it, but right now, the law of the state does not have that.
I, I was just start always hoping, and I think we need to talk about this, we could have a liaison between the education and the. County, county council.
We need to put that in the agenda to meet with them in the second part of that.
Because uh, uh, like uh, many groups. Now, even at the Stubblefield Institute, when we went to that, every, there was a water sewer, a drug department, on and on and on. But nobody from the board was asked to sit on that panel.
None.
And we presented questions, and you know, you had to submit your questions and hopefully they would answer one of them, but who they may get our questions answered, so.
Um, yes, okay, so. Sorry if I'm just missing something, but why can a development not be denied? I understand that there is no zoning. But if it's gonna have a devastating effect on the area. Why is it not grounds for denial? And that's lost on me. No, no, I, and I understand that.
What, what it appears to me to be is a check off system, as long as they, the, the Department of Highways has a lot of. Say, because egress in and out of the subdivision. But as long as they fill out the paper. And he, I, and I don't know if, if they exceed the numbers here or what. Uh, they can't be denied because this piece of paper, it's just a check off.
So even though it shows that they're already over capacity. And that they would be adding even, you know, either, it, it doesn't matter. So I mean, really, what's, I mean, not to sound um flippant, but what's the point of even filling that?
I think that form was not to uh approve or deny a subdivision, it was to give the board a heads up.
Yep.
Oh, okay. That's so not fair to you guys.
That check though, it's really, it's, it's the, the sewer department signing off on it, E W is signing off on it, school and water sign on. So there, there are requirements today, and if, if they've gone through their due diligence and they meet those requirements, they.
Well, then other than somehow retroactively changing the fact that we don't have zoning laws. How can we change the, the narrative? Is this a possible thing or are we just like grasping at straws here?
I, I'm not qualified to answer that.
I think, I think change is possible, but we have to realize that it's, it's long term, this isn't a short place. Uh, everything you see in front of you, it's gonna happen, you're not gonna stop it. Uh, but we, we can change the narrative by looking forward ten years and twenty years, and again, some other states do. With impact fees, with requiring uh lands to be set aside in these big subdivisions for future school locations. I mean, it, there, there's working models in like numerous other states.
I know.
But we have to look, e, e, like I said, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, it's in something way, I think we're towards more, you know, more distant future.
Okay.
You had a question, go ahead.
More of a statement, you know, I talked to the city and their planning, how, and how they run, Jason Baker, I'm running for city council. Um. Everything on this checklist, and I'm almost, I'll speak of just the city, not on the county's level. As a, as a builder, you can fix those issues, if it's egress issues. I can pay for another entrance, I can pay if I go over the ninety nine, I can have another entrance come into it. I can expand the road to have that subdivision, if it's water. I can write, I can raise the size of the pipe that's coming to me, so I can do it if it's sewer, it's all those things. So all of those have a checklist, and the reason they have the checklist is I can fix that. So all of those have a checklist and the reason they have the checklist is I can fix that. As a developer, you can't fix that. You can't fix a school. Can't say, hey, we're going to put this in without an impact fee. And obviously this county has chosen to not accept impact fees. I personally don't see that ever changing. I don't think this county will ever accept an impact fee. Uh, if anything, I can tell you that the city is, is to look more into allowing growth to come back into our city. So that we are probably, if anything, going to try to entice more building inside of our city. Because we have the opposite of what's going on in this. You know, we're, we, we're growing, but we're growing on subdivisions that are outside of our school system. You know, and as city councilman, when's the last time there, see, there was a new elementary school built in the city? When was the last time there was a new school built inside of the city? You know, we talked about all these other areas, but nothing's happening inside the city of Martinsburg. So why would a council, city councilman ever endorse any type of impact fees? We have zoning. City of Martinsburg has zoning. Why would we as a city council ever endorse impact fees for the school system? That is not building new schools and is overcrowded our schools in our, in our city. And haven't been part of that. It's that you all will be part of our conversation of the issues that the city council has in our schools that we have. You know, one of the biggest answers that you did with your populations of, of Martinsburg High School. Was when you all redistricted, you just pulled students. Just pull, you just pulled them into the Spring Mills district. And we just pulled classrooms, trailer classrooms at that, I understand, but we're still not renovating. You know, Martinsburg High School is sitting here, it's the, it is the only school that, it's the last school to be. It's the oldest one that hasn't been renovated or had updates, major additions to the school.
We do have a six million dollar renovation coming to Martinsburg High School, a Brazilian dollar renovation coming to Burke Street Elementary. So there are a number of projects in, there's a number of small.
New classroom in Martinsburg High School, not one.
Well, there's a potential for a learning space.
And in the, in the addition into Burke Street is new new classroom.
You're right.
So, yeah, you're taught, it's, it's easy and that was your sales pitch at the bond meeting when, when we approved this. That was your sales, that was your old sales pitch. It's new new, you were putting this money at Martinsburg High School. You were putting this money at Burke Street, but not a new classroom.
Well, we're, not, not to debate.
And I, and I apologize, my, my, my point was more on the planning side of it is. You know, you're talking about Berkeley County, but the city has planning. We have the ability to do. I'm Jason Baker.
Okay.
I said, I might as well say it louder, but I apologize, Mr. Burkhart.
Redistrict students back into those schools when we don't have room to put them there. And then build onto those schools just to, so the city of Martinsburg can have growth.
Well, that, let me, let me correct, but let me correct, I'm misunderstanding.
Which you are going to place in the trailers.
Let me jump in here, Mr. Baker. Um, we are going to build, we're going to travel this, this long, please. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to start off.
I, I want you to understand that there, there's a misconception here of one. We are going to build two pre-K centers. Those pre-K centers are going to take pre-K classrooms out of the existing schools. Around the county and, and everything. Those are going to create new state classrooms. For kindergarten through fifth grade and the elementary school, even up to the high school. We have children who are four years old walking through the hallways of Hedgesville High School or did have. And that's called three upper classroom at Hedgesville High. I think we have some pre-K classrooms within the city. And, uh, and maybe, I, I, I don't know, I can't hit. But those classrooms which are being used for pre-kindergartners are now going to be free for the children. K through twelve if they're over the high school. So there is a misconception there that a lot of people in the community don't realize. We're getting more than just schools are doing. We're going to have classrooms freed up. That's, that's to put more students in, in a lot of existing schools. I think there are forty-some. Classrooms?
Yes.
Forty-some pre-K classrooms countywide. Now, I'm not saying just Martinsburg, but countywide. They're going to be freed up for the standard, what I call the K through twelve schools. So I, I can't tell you how many are within Martinsburg. Second thing is, is that we. Have, have built schools in areas you all have expanded to. For example, Orchard View is part of the city of Martinsburg, which we appreciate for fire and everything else protection and work. So we have built new schools, not recently, but we have to, we can't build everything everywhere in the town. We have to selectively put our bonds up there. One, we have to look at where the population is. Has the greatest growth to build the schools there. So that's another factor. And when you look at the data for Spring Mills, it's just like a bottom.
And it's something we acknowledge, you know, as we're doing our bond presentations. At the time that started our current population study was done, Martinsburg was the only static district of, of all our high school districts. And a short time later, you know, uh, nine months later, that had changed. Just with, with learning about all the new departments coming in, in, uh, in all of the mills. Uh, was not on our radar when, when that population study was done. And then by the time we're running the bond, it is. And that's how quickly all this has changed. We, we couldn't do, uh. We, we couldn't keep slides current from one presentation to the next, not just in Martinsburg, but in all the districts. That's how quickly the numbers are changing. So, so you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, it is difficult for us to keep up with. And we do have some old buildings in the city limits that are, are in advanced remodel and. Uh, of course, in the future, they're going to have to be expanded or replaced.
And then we could go up into pilot programs where there's tax incentives. To build these things and yet. Education will not be able to collect the tax on the excess living. For those properties because they're done. So there we have. Education subsidizing economic development, which is another issue. So we, we have, we could, we could have a renaissance there.
I didn't mean in any disrespect to. Or it's, it, it, either, I don't understand, and we also have Delmore, you did speak Delmore, that's going to be two hundred. You know, and I, and I can tell you as a council, city council. We, it's something that is talked about, there's some of that, and, and it's the same thing as the county is with the. You know, the planning is, is a separate entity. We give them the guidance. Of, you know, you have to have this, this and this, and it is a checklist. And, you know, I, I have no issue with the school being, school system being part of that. Um, but I can tell you that the city council at least is getting, some of us, and I'm always speaking for myself. Um, you know, we are getting frustrated because our schools are getting extremely old. And are getting in bad, deplorable shape. And, you know, that's nothing that we want, you know, that, uh, that, at least the city and. I'm sure that even you all know with that.
We, we, we can't close down old buildings for them. We need every classroom we can keep. One last comment.
I just have to say in the same vein, um, but it's more of. You guys care so much about kids' education and I have been in many school districts. Unfortunately, I have been in ones that all care about kids' education, but we moved here in February of twenty fifteen. Um, I have one kid who's on the autism spectrum. My older kid was slightly speech delayed. But you guys had five new kids move to the district and you opened up a classroom in Burke Street Elementary. And it was like a huge closet off of the cafeteria. So that these kids, because I know that you have to for early intervention and for people that have IDPs. But you guys made it happen for kids that also otherwise didn't necessarily have to have pre-K in the middle of the year. And I mean, that was eight years ago now, and that just has stuck with me on how much you guys really do care. About the, the welfare and wellbeing of the children in this community. And so while we're ragging on different things, you guys care so intensely. And I mean, I have to say that I do appreciate that. It's not just about money. It's not just about the buildings. You guys want the kids to excel and, um, that's, like I said, something that has stuck with me. Since the moment we moved here on February sixth of twenty fifteen.
Thank you, thank you.
Amen to that.
Any more comments from the board?
I just want to say thank you for all of you guys coming in and, and speaking. I, I know we had a. Little bit of a vigorous debate there for just a second. But I, I think it's healthy and I, I love the fact that we all had a conversation. We had questions. We were able to answer as best we could. In some cases, we can't answer for those who are not represented here tonight. But I just wanted to say thank you and, you know, from someone who literally commented just a little bit before the meeting. That, that I hadn't seen a healthy, calm, rational. Conversation debate around something that can get so heated. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for listening.
That you guys came and I, I just, thank you.
Well, I apologize for getting heated.
Oh, Josh, thank.
It's okay. We've had, we've had plenty of conversations on Facebook, so we're.
Great offense to anything said by, about our schools. And, uh, this gets me a lot to me, this school's mean a lot to me. I went to Martin Brook High School, I graduated from there and. You know, I, 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 we try to keep our schools up the best that we can with the resources that we can. And take care of the, the students at the same time. So it's not that we, uh, don't care about the city. We do, we care about everything. It's hard to do it all.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to, to edit that back. And, uh, thank you, Joe, for, you know, the information. I appreciate it. I just want you all to know, you're just one of the cogs that we're, you know. We're, we're, we're hitting them all, uh, because it, it all has to, everything has to come together. It's not just the schools, you know, like I said, water, infrastructure, emergency services, roads. You know, they're all impacted. Every, every, everybody's getting impacted by this. So I just feel like it's time for somebody to say something, so it's going to end up being me, that case. Much to my husband's dismay, I need to take him out of here. My marriage may not survive this meeting. Thank you guys, I appreciate you.
Thanks for hanging around.
Thanks.
Uh, the bond project update, um, Jessica, um. I would say that probably the big news at the last meeting was the attorney general signed up with the paper. And we were able to publish the first of two, or.
I'm going to, um, legal out of these, going to face paper.
Okay, I, I think that's about it. Do you have any? Okay, moving on to action items, uh, Mr. Burkhart, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, this evening is the final phase of our. Calendar for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. We have, uh. Had two public hearings with no comments that I'm avail, or that I am aware of. And, um, at this point, um, I present to you the calendar as it has been shared earlier. And, um, it is, um, waiting for your action and approval at this time.
Hey, are there any questions? We're staring. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, what are the end marking period dates? Um, I'm just trying to follow this and I started to go cross out.
Okay, first marking period would be eight fourteen.
Okay.
No, that's the starting date. Uh, let me see, let me go. So it is not on this calendar?
No, it's on your supplemental.
Yeah, we create that supplemental calendar, which I do not have with me, but it is every nine weeks.
Okay.
Um, so I haven't created that yet.
Okay, so my curiosity was, does these need days, uh, for teacher? Um, you know, professional learning or whatever.
Teacher prep delay days?
Yes.
Or the professional development days? We have both.
Well, either one, I guess is where I'm, is where my brain is going because I, you know, we're hearing from teachers. Um, we're hearing from, from principals that, um, there's not enough time in the day. Cause I mean, that's just where we're at with these days. Um, where they need to be able to have the ability to sit down and actually process. And put together things that they need to at the end of the market period.
Yes, so those three teacher prep delay days that we created and the superintendent did approve. Are, um, strategically placed during those nine week periods so that they do have time. Um, to do that. Also, what we can do is on those professional development days, and we have five of them in the calendar. Um, we can allow time in the mornings, um, for those, for their principals to give them time to work. Um, as well on lesson planning or whatever they would deem necessary at that time.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I, I'm hearing from them going, we don't have enough time and, and trust me, I get it, that nobody has enough time at this, at this point. Um, I just want to make sure that. We hear them and we're trying to facilitate.
And this year we came on very strong with our professional development days, um. Due to the no more perm substitutes that we have and whatnot, not knowing that some of the challenges we've had were going to happen. Um, so we had to regroup a little bit, but knowing that as well. Um, we can adjust those morning times of those five professional development days. So that teachers do have more time to work with their teams or in the classrooms or lesson planning, however they deem necessary to use it. But we did also add those three teacher delay prep days to help support at those nine weeks.
That was my, that was good, that was part of my question was, you know, does that line up with? And it does.
Yes, and that was the reason for that, we gave them a little extra time.
And it does this year also. It, it did this year also.
Well, we don't have those days this year.
We didn't have any of them. I thought we, we just had one.
So that was a professional learning day. We have five of those a year.
Yeah.
That's a professional learning day. We have them in this calendar, but then we also created three, um. Professional development, uh, delay days.
Okay.
Where teachers can use right before the nine weeks to do their grades and to plan or to use however they want to. At that time, so those are three, like, that's two additional hours.
Oh, which we did. This, this last time we allowed them to.
Yes, yes, for four hours.
The, uh, the concern because of the tacking problem and the accessibility of schoolology and the things. Is there any way that we could, I mean, with, with enough notice for parents? Give them a day next week with, uh, inquiry to the state board to ask. You know, we haven't had a lot of, we haven't had any snow, but what we.
Are you saying a day off?
Not a day off, a day to get, get to do the work.
But a day with no instruction with students? I mean, that is something the superintendent would, would have to decide with the board. I, I don't have the power to do that.
Don't we have to get that proof out of state?
Well, the superintendent, when we had the, where you really had to, he was a non, uh. What's it called? Non-traditional. So where they gives it is the, uh, AIT, the accumulated instructional time of thirty minutes. So that's why you get the two-hour early dismissal or delays. That eats into that time. So there is still some bank there that. He could use, maybe put a delay or something, but that would be between the board and superintendent and Burkhart and our staff. To develop that, there is some extra time there still that could be. That one day because he didn't have instruction the entire day, but these.
Situation with the internet.
Yeah.
And it was, I think, a little bit of a challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, some people I know, I, you wouldn't believe how long it took me to run this off at home. Because I could run, I, I have a picture of me doing the burning leaves with a blanket. And that's my high-speed internet. I mean, I don't have, I have a hotspot, I'm paying forty dollars a month for it. And it takes me forever. It's, I got to run off today. Uh, thank you for the. President's book, otherwise I'd be fine. And I, I just feel like that, uh, what Miss Abel said tonight, uh, shared with me. Uh, if we can get a day to let them work and give the parents a chance to make arrangements.
I don't think they need a. I don't think they need a. I think even if we gave them a half day.
An early dismissal.
Early dismissal or a late day, but to ask parents to I don't know what the answer is. When is that? When would that be?
Another report.
They're due the seventeenth of March.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's not, that's not ordinary time. I know, I.
I know.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I just. I I just think that we can help them out. After I watched the debate on the PPIA and everything else, I I'm really, and I've I've had conversations with people in board offices about their their concern over the same thing. I'm just worried that everything coming down, all these deadlines, all this work. People are working at night at home because they don't have the time to work in the daytime because they're covering for classes. It's it's, I just feel like the whole system's worried.
Well, I think we all do that. We make things work from the top down. We're all doing that.
I know, and I'm just worried about.
And we'll continue to do it. Um, now, as far as the deadline for the report card, if we needed to extend that, I mean, that's something we could do if needed. Um, I have not heard that. This is, you know, the first one.
Four weeks.
That it's been, you know, told to me, but even with that, I would have to pay that to the superintendent and make sure that that is something that he wanted to do. Um, and I would support that, but as far as a day off, I I think that would need to come from you and and our superintendent.
Well, I I suggested extending the deadline for the report cards, but when it was indicated that that wouldn't really be a help, it still needs the time during the day to get caught off.
Yeah, they they're just, they're burning out. And it's, I'm sure you all in the board office are under the same stress because I know you're out working in the school, trying to help schools. I'm just, I'm just worried about the structure of the system and and what are we going to have next year in our classroom?
Yeah, and I I can tell you, you're not the only one who's gotten feedback. Uh, I've got I had one today, I had a teacher tell me today that it's all they can do just to get to the end of the school year. My heart breaks because you can tell that their passion is there for their kids. But they they're on empty. They're on empty. And I know when when we'd advocated for and they received that four hours at home for their professional learning. That was the the feedback that that I had received that of thank yous was astronomical and I'm right there with you, Jackie. I just, I we gotta do something for them. But what? I don't want them to burn out and and quit. I don't want them to, I mean, they're on empty. How can we expect them to to give their absolute? I mean, they always do give their absolute best, one hundred percent.
I think everyone, like Taylor said, everybody's on.
Everybody is.
I've got a question. I guess back to back to the calendar. No, well, I I noticed, okay, you have the prep and delay days and the professional learning days. But I know there were some teachers that came before saying there wasn't, might have been professional development days where there was not enough time because principal would have them do all various trainings where they also needed time to do planning things, but couldn't be done because it was too much crunched into those days where they couldn't actually get the things done that they want to get done. So I'm wondering are those prep and delay days going to be enough?
Okay, so I said this year we went out pretty strong on those professional learning days, and I said that next year on the professional learning days, which there's five days that are built into the calendar, just like this year. We're going to allow a lot more flexibility at their schools in the morning during that time. We still need to do professional development countywide like we did on the twentieth, um, but it would give them a little more uh time to work in their classrooms or to plan and and work together on those days. This year, we had it scheduled because we felt like it was so necessary with the number of substitutes that we had in our buildings and with our test scores and looking at that to really try to increase student achievement, we felt like we really needed to provide and work on that professional development to really bring that rigor into the classroom so that our students were doing better. So we hit it very hard this year. With that, we've had other challenges, of course. Recently, the internet challenge, um, which has created just another level of stress. So in this calendar, looking forward, we still have those professional development days. We're looking at you allowing the morning to be used how the principal wants to use it. Whereas before we had it very structured. So the principal might have a principal's meeting and we'll say, you can have your principal's meeting, but then the rest of the morning, the teachers need to be able to do what they need to do to get done for the week of school or for the month of school. Then in the afternoon, and we could change the schedule, maybe we'll do ours in the morning and they have the afternoon. They would have their professional development that we're working on that is our county initiative, which is going to be rigor on co-teaching and improving those test scores and supporting students and and teachers, and we would have those professional development hours still. Now, we don't have built-in teacher workdays, and I think teachers thought that's what this was because years ago, and I was a principal for a long time, they kind of used to have professional development days. They did away with them and they said, this is the principal's day to do professional development in your building. So it was up to the principal. I can tell you what happened. Uh, everybody was wondering when, when are we going home early? Now, we didn't have the problems we had then either. Um, and some, you know, schools let out early, some have professional development, some didn't. So coming in after COVID and looking at our achievement, uh, the department decided we really need to focus on who are we? Where do we want to be? And what's the most important thing we're doing and that we need to look at? Student achievement or reading of math? Okay, we have some schools with a number of permanent substitutes who are educated people, who are smart people, who've never been in a classroom. How can we make sure that those students are trained, that those teachers are trained and our students are getting the best quality education they can? And that was through our professional development. And that's why I said we hit it really hard this year. Um, and we did. We worked really hard to provide every opportunity for those new teachers to be able to say, oh, this is how I do this. This is what is best for kids. This is what the Berkeley County School literacy model is. With that, we also gave them playbooks, which were just references, very short references that any person who could read could look at it and say, oh, this is a model for how my reading class should be, or this is a model for how I should be teaching math. And then we focused on providing more development to build on. So that's how we are thinking this through. Um, it is a lot. Um, and I'm not saying it's easy, but um, when you look at learning loss because of COVID and everything our county is going through and other things as well, we've had, I think the last five years in education have been very challenging and have changed greatly. This is the approach that we call. Um, and and I feel confident that it's a positive approach. We can back off a little, but I can tell you without that professional development, with the number of perm subs we have in our buildings, we're not going to see student achievement. We're going to, we're going to raise it a little bit, um, and we have our veteran teachers who are outstanding and are work working very hard. But it takes everybody. And being able to, you know, collaborate and plan together is really important and they're subbing. And I understand that as well. Um, so that takes that piece away from it too. However, we do have opportunities and I know they're exhausted, but we do pay them if they want to work after school. And a lot of principals and teams have gotten creative and will plan after school together, and they get paid to do that. So they are compensated. It is a longer day and more work, but it does give them an opportunity with some compensation to do that. Um, so.
I just have another question that gets, um, I know it's getting brought up all the time. Um, it's still calendar related.
Okay.
Is the mandatory trainings that staff have to do?
Um, that's on the safe and supportive schools.
I was asking, is that usually done before the, was that done that first week? I can't try to remember.
Yes, they were given opportunities during the first week to do it.
To do all those things.
Yes, but it's a lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's a lot, but it's required. Those are required trainings every year, and we all have to do them. I mean, everybody in the school system has to do that.
And they're turned on before school even starts.
Yes.
But that is good remembers them.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a, we have a presentation. Were there any more questions about the calendar? Maybe we've got a lot of questions about the year. Okay, I need a motion to approve the uh RFC of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Ms. Power is second by Ms. Long. All discussion on the motion. All those in favor, the most signify by saying aye. For his name, I appear to have eyes to have to clear the question adopted, you know, and Dr. Schoey. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, the personnel actions that you have before you this evening that are dated for Monday, March the sixth, uh, twenty twenty-three are as follows. We have six new coaching appointments. One is paid, five of those are unpaid. Uh, we have one ratification of a suspension and termination of a coach on line eight, and that is Jennifer Baker. We have four coaching resignations. One new extra duty assignment. Uh, one resignation of an extra duty assignment. Three new healthcare appointments. On line eighteen, we have a ratification of suspension termination, and that's Kathy Cockens. We have four professional resignations. Uh, one revised resignation with the date that has been determined. Uh, we have seven new professional retirements that qualify for the retirement bonus by the end of the year. Uh, one administrative reassignment. Eight uh service appointments. Three corrections, the previous uh appointments there. And we have four changes of assignments of service personnel. We unfortunately lost one employee at Spring Mills High School uh last month. Three resignations of service personnel. Five retirements of service personnel. And the one transfer of service personnel. Uh, we have eleven new substitute service personnel to add to the list. Uh, with one resignation of substitutes there on the service side, six new substitute teachers to appoint and two resignations of substitute teachers for a total of seventy-five personnel actions with the superintendent's recommendation.
I have a motion to approve the personnel list.
Come on.
Second. Okay, a motion been made on this, Ms. Long and second by Mr. Martin to approve the um personnel list. Are there any questions from members of the board of Dr. Schoey?
Well, we're losing a lot of teachers with people to return, so I'm some professional.
Other comments or questions? What does time sheet mean?
Uh, if it's the backup for the healthcare, they uh have been trained and they only get paid when they actually perform the duty, even like as a substitute for giving the medication or the hygiene of the individual. There's normally someone there, but they're just trained to be backed up that individual.
I think he's talking about the boss.
Boss run, uh, which one? The bus run, the mid-days, those are not a salary position, so it's based on their time sheets they turned in.
So they're paid by the hour?
Yes.
Other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. For his name, I appear to have eyes to have to clear the motion pass. Board announcements. I'm going to announce uh that Mr. Damon Wright and Ms. Long were going to work along with council board. And anyone else say uh determined to help them to develop a nepotism policy in Berkeley County uh for future board consideration. And the other thing is, is that at the next board meeting, we have these assignments at schools and I thought maybe before the school year is out that we switch. I don't want to do it tonight, but uh at the next board meeting, I want you all to be thinking about different different assignments so you can go visit those schools.
I want to visit my schools before I switch ones.
Okay, so at the next board meeting, you will be visiting.
I guess between now and then I'll really be visiting.
Okay. This is Dr. Schoey.
Uh, good evening on behalf of Mr. Stevens. Uh, probably, uh, they, the his son's basketball team Chattanooga uh lost this evening. So they're second in their conference. It was eighty-eight plus seventy-nine. And Jake Stevens led the way with twenty-five points for his team, so. So we're waiting to see if selection Saturday here. Sunday, uh, turns out for the team. So then he, so his announcement that he provided to us again, we want to thank and really congratulate our ace lord Valerie Kearns this evening and this population or this staff that's uh, head of the medal for being here to help support that truly shows a great asset to Berkeley County Schools and our students that we have there. Also, it's youth art month and students of each of the four high schools will have art on display at the mercifully creative downtown Martinburg starting on March twelfth. And congrats goes out to our wrestlers that competed this past weekend at the state tournament. Uh, we had the musicians uh perform at the WVA conference and then uh Velocity Dance Team was in Orlando, Florida at Nations. So we had a lot of creative arts as well as sports going on this past week. Uh, Read Across America was last week. Uh, uh, we had guest speakers within our schools uh coming in to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday with this uh traditional event that was sponsored by NEA over the years. Uh, and many things there. Also, you heard a little bit this evening, I believe, at one time was the high school and uh engineering science fairs that was held uh over the weekend as well. Here you see some of our uh high school students who recently participated in that. They are first place in today's science fair in Charleston uh for possibly spots of the International Science Fair and Engineering Fair in Dallas, Texas in May and uh the picture there, Sidney Bostick uh on the left has already got her ticket to the National uh Science and Engineering Fair for a second year in a row. Berkeley County, earning grand champion at the regional competition, and her project uh was in system software engineer category. Then Friday, we had a employee appreciation day all around, but in particular for our maintenance uh personnel on March third. So you saw some of that of our social media posts uh there uh for our district. And then we want to say a big thank you to these individuals that were in and out of our schools. Uh, Joe and his team do a great job of keeping everything up and running uh for these. The department's made up of carpenters, electricians, general maintenance, HVAC and plumbers uh to keep the buildings running. Some maintenance uh members shared that they loved about their jobs. I love working in the school and seeing kids smiling faces and knowing that I'm part of their education and keep them safe. Another one commented, working in maintenance is a new challenge every day. At the end of the day, I see the work I've done and can be proud. So a big thank you to the VCS maintenance team for everything that they do uh last week. Uh, this week is uh National School Breakfast Week and it's dig into school breakfast. So we have uh three or four schools out there really celebrating the school breakfast. Uh, and be trying some new uh breakfast items. They include strawberry pancake breakfast bowl, a crustable breakfast sandwich, smoothie bowls and more. Uh, so you never know who might appear in some of the guest serving lines this week uh for our kids from the staff as well uh going out there. We recognize our child nutrition department for all their hard work throughout the year. So far, they have served one million eighty thousand three hundred and sixty breakfasts this year alone uh through the end of February. And so on average, they're serving nine thousand four hundred and seventy-seven breakfasts a day to our students. Uh, and here you see some of the pictures from uh earlier this year during school lunch week of our school cafeterias and trying to get students to participate in those programs. Uh, this week is also uh School Social Worker Week. Uh, the School Social Work Week, uh is an opportunity for schools and communities to partner, to acknowledge and recognize the impact they do to support uh students, families and their communities. Under the leadership of School Social Work Association of America, this celebration emphasizes school social work contributes a focus on the hope, child, linking families and community resources and valuable ways as part of the school's multiple disciplinary team at advocating for the professional and school social work. The theme this year is we rise. During the school year, uh school social workers are confronted with many challenges, heightened anxieties and anticipate difficulties. However, school social workers face these challenges with strength and resilience. School social workers rise up, supporting their families and their school communities and their students. School social workers rise to share hope. School social workers rise to share hope. They rise to listen and understand. They rise to the challenge of inequities. They rise to support all students. So thank you uh to our social workers out there. And then also, our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on Monday, March the twentieth at Spring Mills High School, and it's the L S I C presentation to begin uh the Spring Mills District at five P M with the regular meeting to start at seven. And thank you very much for this evening.
Thank you. Wanna, last bit of business is I wanna schedule a meeting on Sunday, uh, Sunday the twelfth at one o'clock. And that meeting will be in the superintendent's search process to develop the format questions. Um, we take preliminary view of uh any resumes we have. We also have to take action on a late application, um, and we'll do it at that meeting. Uh, and the meeting will be at one o'clock and we're gonna try to schedule it at holiday and, and a, and a room up there. Uh, Mr. Call will try to make the arrangements for us up there.
Are you saying you've got a deadline for nation, the deadline?
Yeah, yeah, and we just have to take action.
Decide whether we wanna accept or not.
Right, right. And uh, the other thing is, is that on the, on Saturday, the twenty-fifth. Uh, I initially was talking about the eighteenth, but we have to move it to the twenty-fifth. Uh, would you all be willing to spend a Saturday interviewing candidates for the superintendent? Everybody okay with that? Okay, that'll be a nine o'clock starting time. Uh, at the holiday end, we, we determined.
First meeting will be at the holiday end?
Yes, ma'am. And uh, so we, we have the meeting on the twelfth, number one, at one o'clock. And that'll be uh to develop the the questions to a preliminary review of the uh, of the uh resumes we have and the applications. And also, we have to handle a later rival formally. Um, at one of the part of like of the council. And then on the twenty-fifth, we will schedule the candidates for the interview process.
Do we each have that application or we will get?
Uh, Mr. Uh, School will send it to you.
All right, another update I have for that is just this, today I received the first draft of the results of community surveys, data survey, everything. There's a second part to that that did not come in yet. It's as soon as I get both together. Uh, before that, I'll to you, so we'll try to have that to look at.
Before that day.
Before that day, yes.
Uh, we got all better. Thank you, Ms. Rivera, for that. Okay, the hour is late. I'm sure you all don't wanna talk about anything else, so let's have a motion to adjourn. Okay, the fight is between Ms. Power and Ms. Long.
And I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name, my side. Good night, thank you, staff, we're staying.